Hello there. Hopefully this is working and this is our first time trying to livestream an adult education session. This is John Nipoma, your seminarian here at St. Brendan Catholic Church. This is Adult Formation Lenten Series and we're going to cover praying with the saints. And we're going to call this session 1.5. It's a revised presentation of Tenebrae, Alexio Davina, and Benedictine Spirituality. Before we begin, I'd like to start with an opening prayer and I'd like to pray with our Saint of the Night, Saint Benedict. And so we'll begin in the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit. Amen. "Gracious and holy Father, give us the wisdom to discover you, the intelligence to understand you, the diligence to seek after you, the patience to wait for you, eyes to behold you, a heart to meditate upon you, and a life to proclaim you through the power of the Spirit of Jesus, our Lord. In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit. Amen." By the way, that's a prayer written by Saint Benedict for all who are seeking a deeper faith, which I do believe that most of us are. So, as you can see, this is again our Adult Formation Lenten Series, Praying with the Saints, session 1.5. And we're going to cover Tenebrae. We're going to begin the Holy Week with Alexio Davina on Scripture from the Gospel of John, Chapter 12, and Jesus' Dinner with His friends Lazarus, Martha, and Mary of Bethany. And then for those of you who didn't get a chance to sit in on the first session, we'll conclude with a review of Benedictine Spirituality. There's our prayer, by the way. I'm sorry, I didn't get that up while we were praying, but you get a chance to glimpse it one more time there. So as I mentioned, some of you were able to join us in our first session that we held in person here in this very sanctuary of St. Brendan about a month ago, on March 4th. Since that time, our mode of existence has significantly shifted. Our original plan for this Lenten series was a sequential progression from Benedictine prayer to Dominican prayer, followed by Carmelite prayer, and concluded with Ignatian prayer. In light of the unanticipated pandemic and the shift in our mode of ministry and operation, as a means of entering into Holy Week and in order to prepare for the Paschal Tritoom, I've decided to double back and offer a revised version of Benedictine prayer that I'll call session 1.5, which includes the history and practice of Tenebrae, a live interactive Alexio Davina in today's Gospel reading from the Mass Lectureary on the Anointing of Jesus' Feet by Mary of Bethany. And for those of you who have not participated in the first session on March 4th, we will conclude with a teaching and review of Benedictine Spirituality in order to provide the context for subsequent sessions, as well as post a recorded version on YouTube prior to completing the series. Just a quick note regarding the practice of Tenebrae. Why this topic? We will actually be performing Tenebrae, we'll be praying Tenebrae Wednesday evening here at 8:00. And I thought it would be nice to tie in the historical roots of how this ancient practice came about prior to giving you all the opportunity to participate through livestream on Wednesday night. So this said, about a week ago, we posted a second session on our series, which featured the prayer of Saint Dominic and Saint Catherine of Siena. And considering the unanticipated changes we've had, this Lenten series will be extended beyond the Lenten season this year. So we'll be doing livestreams of both Carmelite prayer and Ignatian prayer in the weeks to come. In order to get us all up to speed together as we enter our last official week of our intentional focus on prayer, fasting, and almsgiving, I'd like to just review a little bit of where we stood with that. In the previous session, we discussed how prayer consists of an exchange between a person and God, which involves active listening and responding with the heart to know and love God to a greater degree. Whereas fasting, we could say, consists of an exchange or interaction between a person and goods of the world or activities that might otherwise distract us from seeing ourselves in the light of God's love. So indeed fasting leads to a greater knowledge and love of self and in turn helps us to enter more deeply into prayer itself. For those of you who may be doing the I Am program or Exodus 90, both of these platforms provide an opportunity to recall a true love for God and restore an appropriate love of self. And almsgiving is the fruit of prayer. Let's see, let's fast forward, so there's some slides here. Here we go. "Almsgiving is the fruit of prayer, which consists of an exchange between one person and another that helps us to know and love our neighbors." We also talked about how prayer can serve as a linchpin for these threefold disciplines of prayer, fasting, and almsgiving. Prayer helps us to discern which activities and habits to fast from, when, how, and to whom to give alms. Now, absent of prayer, we risk inordinate fasting. And our fasting can either lack sacrifice and we can be much too soft on ourselves, or we can undergo undue asceticism and be too hard on ourselves, neither of which leads to true almsgiving. Likewise, almsgiving without prayer lacks true compassion and turns into pity for others. Now that we have entered into Holy Week, we may be finding our desert journey has taken somewhat of an unofficial detour. That is, it may be starting to resemble the path of the children of Israel during their epic 40 years wandering through the desert. We might also find ourselves dictated by the reign of a crown-shaped virus that has brought the livelihood of the entire globe to a screeching halt. Although more research is needed, a recent study of the virus's genetic material suggests that there are many similarities as seen in snakes. Interestingly enough, in last Tuesday's Lectureary in the Mass, we read about how the children of Israel were struck down by venomous serpents in the desert. Likewise, the news reports of each day disclose that many in our midst are being struck down by this novel coronavirus and the sickness it brings. "In response to their plight, the children of Israel and Moses mounted a bronze snake on a pole, and Moses instructed them to look at it whenever they feared death as a result of having been bitten." He did this that they may see the death of the serpent as a means of life for all. During this week, this week of all times, might we look to Jesus whose life is raised on the cross for us? The death of his flesh is given for us and represents the death of the serpent, and moreover, the end of death itself. When we look to Jesus, we are reminded that we belong to the King of Life, the King of Life who reigns with a crown of thorns, thorns so sharp that they pierced his head. And exposed to us his precious blood in order to cleanse us and heal us of our shortcomings. The precious blood of Christ has been poured into contact with anything that might threaten us from living out the happy, healthy, and holy lives he calls us to. This means that he is and will continue to vanquish the ill effects that the feared viral crown has brought about. As a person of the Godhead Himself, Jesus had not the power in and of himself to die for us. He had to take from us mortal flesh. This was the way in which, immortal though he was, he was able to actually die, the way which he chose to give us life. Indeed, through our mutual exchange with him, we gave him the power to die and he will give us the power to live, as such as death contains our greatest hope and glory. As his people, we must continue to remind ourselves again and again, in season and out of season, that above all else, we are called and chosen to live under the crown and authority of Jesus. We know from his very own words that as his followers, we are called to love the Lord our God with all of our heart, mind, soul, and strength, and likewise, to love our neighbors as ourselves. In the New Testament Gospel of Matthew, 22:35-40, there's an exchange between Jesus and a group of Pharisees who were scholars. They sought to test him by asking which command is the greatest. And of course, we know that Jesus says, "You shall love the Lord your God with all your heart, mind, soul, and strength, and love your neighbor as yourselves." Likewise, in Thursday's Gospel reading, we will witness Jesus washing the feet of his disciples. And shortly thereafter, Jesus exhorts us with a new commandment, to love one another as he has loved us. That by this, all people will know that we are his disciples. Now, we can trace the words of Jesus back to the Old Testament, especially the books of Leviticus and Deuteronomy. In fact, the Hebrew title of Leviticus comes from the word and meaning "and he called", which emphasizes the theme of God's call to holiness for each and every one of us. Leviticus 19 confirms that "you must not hit your brother in your heart; you must surely reprove your fellow citizen so that you do not incur sin on account of him; you must not take vengeance or bear a grudge against the children of your people, but you must love your neighbor as yourself." Similarly, the name of Deuteronomy is Second Law, or Repeated Law, in order to impress the Israelites with a deep sense of obligation to God and prepare them for the inheritance they awaited. This repeated law was given them just before they entered the promised land of milk and honey. And Deuteronomy 6:4 and 5 says, "Hero Israel, the Lord our God is one Lord, and thou shalt love the Lord thy God with all thy heart, with all thy soul, and with all thy might." And even more, Deuteronomy, Chapter 11, verse 8 to 13 expands on this by saying,[852.24][853.08]"Observe therefore all the commands I am giving you today, so that you may have the strength to go in and take over the land that you are crossing, the Jordan to possess, and so that you may live long in the land the Lord swore to your ancestors, to give them and their descendants a land flowing with milk and honey. The land you are entering to take over is not like the land of Egypt, from which you have come, where you planted your seed and irrigated it by foot as in a vegetable garden; but the land you are crossing, the Jordan to take possession of, is a land of mountains and valleys that drinks from the heaven. It is a land the Lord your God cares for; the eyes of the Lord your God are continually on it from the beginning of the year to its end. So if you faithfully obey the commands I am giving you today, to love the Lord your God and serve him with all your heart, with all your soul, then I will send rain on your land in its season, both autumn and spring rains, so that you may carry in your grain new wine and olive oil. I will provide grass in the fields for your cattle, and you will eat and be satisfied." This ancient text includes a sure promise to all Christian descendants of God's Israelite people, that God is holding us in the palm of his hand. Although we will never return to the flesh pots we once knew, our arid journey is undergoing a fruitful transformation from a barren desert to a garden of hope. In order to live out the truth contained in these Deuteronomical writings, the ancient Israelites adopted a practice of praying three times a day. And they did this in sincere service to God that abides within the heart. This consisted of a morning prayer called a Sahret, which is Hebrew for morning light. And this comes about when there's enough light to recognize a familiar person six feet away. And tradition identifies this time of morning prayer, the Sahret, as a time of prayer instituted by the patriarch Abraham. And we can read in Genesis, Chapter 19, verse 27, it says, "Abraham arose early in the morning", and tradition has since attributed Abraham as the innovator of this morning prayer time. Likewise, there's also an afternoon prayer called a Minah. And this refers first to the vegetable and animal offerings that were brought by Cain and Abel to God. It is believed to have been originated and formalized by Isaac, who went out to converse in the field in Genesis 24:63. This later consisted of the afternoon prayers that are named after the flower offering that accompanies sacrifices at the temple of Jerusalem. Thirdly, there's an evening prayer or a Ma'rev during nightfall. And this corresponds with the patriarch Jacob in Genesis 20:8-11, which says that "when he left his hometown of Beersheba to go to Haran, he met at the place the sun had set." It is believed that Jacob prayed at night and first started reciting the prayer after he fled from his homeland. And this prayer has since been associated with trusting in God's providence. So as the ancient Hebrew temple system developed, each of these prayer times came to correspond with the sacrifice of burnt offerings in the temple of Jerusalem. And additional references in the Hebrew Bible suggest that King David and the prophet Daniel prayed three times a day. In Psalm 5.3, David says, "In the morning I offer you my prayer." And in Psalm 55:18, David says, "Evening, morning, and noon time I speak and moan; he hearkened to my voice." Likewise, later down the line, Daniel in Daniel 6:1 cites that "when Daniel learned of the decree published by King Darius to worship himself alone, Daniel went home to his upstairs room, where the windows opened toward Jerusalem. Three times a day he got down on his knees, prayed, and gave thanks to his God." As a result, that's where we learn about the famous story of Daniel and with lions then, due to praying in a manner that was against the edict given by King Darius. We know that Daniel was then thrown on lion's den and was spared by God. Now, most likely, by the time of Daniel, the Hebrew scripture had developed to the point that prayer primarily consisted of the various Psalms that were collected and written by King David, as well as other writings from Solomon, Moses, and other patriarchs. In fact, there is also some discrepancy about whether devout Jews truly prayed three times a day or whether they very likely prayed four or more times a day. In Psalm 119, David states, "At midnight I will rise to give thanks unto thee." And as a result, some ancient Hebrew texts suggest that if one cannot rise every night at midnight to mourn the loss of the temple, that one should at least do so on Thursday nights in preparation for the Sabbath. So here we have some ancient evidence that the the ancient Israelites prayed in the morning, the noon, in the evening, and very likely again in the very middle of the night. Now, like Jesus himself, the apostles also practiced Judaism and grew up with the practice of praying three or more times a day, in the third hour at 9:00 AM, in the sixth hour at 12:00 noon, and in the ninth hour at 3:00 PM. This is assuming that the first hour then is 6:00 AM, and then again at midnight. And this is referenced, here's a picture of Peter in Acts 10:9, praying on the rooftop at noon in Joppa. And in Acts 10:3, it also speaks of Cornelius praying at 3:00 PM. Likewise, later in Acts, Chapter 16, verse 25, Paul and Silas are heard to be singing and praying hymns at midnight while in jail. And so this ancient Christian prayer of the apostles probably consisted of nearly the same components of the Jewish prayer, basically a recital or chanting of the Psalms, a reading of the Old Testament. And soon thereafter, as Christianity developed in the first decade and the first century or two, the Gospel, Acts, Epistles, and Canticles were soon added. It's also likely that in the first few hundred years of Christianity, that the celebration of the Eucharist was preceded by a nocturnal prayer time, much like the midnight prayer. And this became known as the Mass of the catechumens. And to this day, we still have the same basic components in the Mass of the catechumens who are dismissed prior to the celebration of the Eucharist. Now, it's unclear exactly when the tradition spanned from the Hebrew tradition and the early apostles' tradition of praying three to four or more times a day to seven times a day. But most likely, this came in the third century with the Desert Fathers. The Desert Fathers focused on Psalm 118, verse 64, which literally says, "Seven times a day I have given you praise." Now, although the original idea of the psalmist was probably to use the perfect number of seven in order to focus on earnest, persevering, unceasing prayer, the early Christian monks took the number to be literal. And the early monk John Cassian said that the monks of Bethlehem met together for prayer seven times a day. That's one of the first recorded documents that notes the shift from three or four times a day to seven times a day. Now, for the monks, probably the deeper purpose of following this scriptural number of seven was to help them focus on Saint Paul's exhortation in First Thessalonians, to basically pray without ceasing. Now, having established an objective number of seven prayer times a day, this became known as the Divine Office. And the early monks were concerned about exactly which prayers should be held at exactly which hours of the day. They came to some general conclusions from the life of Christ and the apostles. And since it was believed that Christ would return in the middle of the night, they denoted the midnight or equivalent nocturnal prayer as vigils. Here we have a depiction of the gospel story of the Ten Virgins, the five wise virgins who lighted their lamps and stayed up in the night, and the five unwise virgins who did not have their lamps ready in prayer. Their midnight or equivalent prayer again was termed vigils based on the Latin word "dehilia", which signified a three-hour period in which a soldier would keep watch during the night. Now, this vigils for the desert monks was the grandest of prayer sessions. It was typically consisted of three rounds, or what they called nocturnes, three shifts in the night, which each contained three Psalms and respective readings. Now, likewise, their morning prayer at dawn, usually the vigil would go all the way until dawn, and then after the vigil, they would pray what's called matins. And this was named after the Greek goddess Metuta or Lycothia, who is the goddess of the morning. And this primarily signifies the aurora or the sunrise. The other prayers, in addition to the vigils, again, which was the grandest of prayers in the night, the matins, meaning morning or aurora, were the prime, prime meaning one, signifying the first hour of the day, and that's 6:00 AM. So the desert monks would pray sometime around midnight or thereafter until dusk or till dawn. They would pray matins at dawn. At 6:00 AM, they would pray prime as the first hour. And then again at 9:00 AM, they pray terce, terce meaning three, three hours after six. And then sext, which is six in Latin, six hours after the first hour of six is noon. Non at 3:00 PM, that's the ninth hour from sunrise. And then lucernarium, lucernarium means lights, and that's between 4:00 and 5:00 or 6:00 PM. And that would be second to the vigils in grandeur. And this is when, the reason they call it lights, lucernarium, is because they would light the candles as the sun would go down. Now, by the sixth century, Saint Benedict of Nercia finally formalized this structure of prayer for monks and religious. And we'll discuss more about the life of Saint Benedict towards the end of our session. So on his prayer rotation, in addition to the sacrifice of the Mass, the monastic liturgy of the hours, as it was called, or Divine Office, were concretely composed of eight prayer sessions, seven in the day and one in the night. Now, I'd like to talk a little bit about the work and prayer style of Saint Benedict. The reason is, is because many of us desire to have a deeper prayer life, a more peace-filled, patient life of prayer in the midst of family, work-related responsibilities, expectations, and tensions. Yet we struggle between living for God and working in the world. We can learn from the structure of Saint Benedict's prayer, who sought to live a life apart from the distractions of the world. Yet even in his solitude, he was often sought out by townspeople for guidance. Now, his rule of life refers to prayer as the work of God. And so in his rule, prayer is work and work is prayer. And for him, time set aside for prayer is indeed a great blessing. But according to Saint Benedict, we can all turn our daily activities into prayer itself when we bring them to the awareness of ourselves in relationship with God's ongoing presence in our lives. So instead of wondering how we might squeeze prayer into the busy schedule of our lives, we can adopt a vision in which all that we do is a work of prayer. All that we do is consecrated to God in the cycle of our day, so that all of our work is sacred, from the rising in the morning to drinking our coffee, to our morning communion. to our morning commute, or at this point, our morning login, our computer from home, for many of us. So that living the monastic rhythm is as simple as being more aware of the theme of each hour as we go about our daily business. So for St. Benedict, the morning hour, which is termed as lauds or dawn prayer, this is praise and gratitude. Actually, I'm sorry, the morning hour for St. Benedict, there's a little reversal that happened here. Whereas the Desert Fathers talked about vigils as being the grand prayer in the middle of the night, and matins being the morning prayer, St. Benedict, rather than beginning prayer at midnight, began his prayer at 2:00 AM. And so, because it was later, he called that matins. And so, the name vigil ceased to exist after St. Benedict's time. And matins became the nighttime prayer, beginning at 2:00 in the morning. And this is a time, again, of praise and gratitude. And so, for him, matins was praise and gratitude. The next prayer session, in the morning light, focuses on joy at daylight. In mid-morning, there's a focus on blessing and communion with the Holy Spirit. And we'll discuss how it's believed that the Holy Spirit came right around the nine o'clock hour of the morning at Pentecost upon the disciples. Likewise, at noon, the theme of the prayer for St. Benedict is fervor, commitment, and longing for peace despite the tensions of the day. And then, in the three o'clock hour, a sense of impermanence and a willingness to forgive, and that's mid-afternoon. And then, as dusk comes, a sense of serenity and healing, as well as thanks for the day that has been had. And in the night, an opening to the dark and to God's protection. Now, the names of these prayers were again, matins for St. Benedict, because it began at 2:00 in the morning, lauds, which is Latin for laudaite or praise, is the morning prayer, prime, meaning "one" or "first" hour at 6:00 AM, tirs, at 9:00 AM, being three hours later, sext, at noon, being six hours later, known, at 3:00, being nine hours later, and then vespers, being the evening prayer, and complen, being the night prayer just before bed. And this is a picture depicting St. Benedict. And here we can see... Can they see the arrow if I put it on there? Should be able to. Here you can see matins is kind of the first prayer of the morning, followed by lauds is the morning prayer itself. So matins is dusk, lauds is morning prayer, prime is the nine o'clock hour, tirs is the twelve o'clock hour, sext is the three o'clock... I'm sorry. Prime is a six o'clock hour, tirs is the nine o'clock hour, sext is the noon hour, known is the three o'clock hour, vespers is as night falls, and complen is right before bed. So again, matins, matins was considered the grandest of prayer times. And I've kind of depicted a little schematic here that shows the grandeur of matins compared and the length of time it took compared to all the others. And that matins was nine plus Psalms, and so it took a lot longer. And then you can see lauds, which would have been prayed right around 5:00 or 6:00, 5:00 AM, consisted of about five Psalms. Prime, about three Psalms, tirs, sext, and known, all three Psalms. And so those were minor prayer times. And then vespers again, is about the same length as lauds, so morning and evening prayer. And then complen again, right before bed, is a bit shorter than the others. And so, matins was the grandest prayer time. Why? Because it was associated with the hour when Christ arose from the sepulcher. And for St. Benedict, this office, as we said, was held at 2:00 AM, and it still maintained two or three sections or rounds of nocturnes, each consisting of three groups of Psalms in what are called lessons, their readings from Scriptures, and then responses in regard to those lessons that are learned from Scripture. Louts is Latin again for laudaite, and that's usually about 5:00 AM, but earlier in the summer and later in the winter. And this replaced the matins of the desert monks. And this devotes dawn to recalling the memory of Christ's resurrection and the images of light and the commitment to praise God in all places by which the first gleam of dawn recalls to our minds that Christ is the true light. This consists of five Psalms, often including an Old Testament canticle or Psalm, as well as the Gospel of Luke, chapter 1, the Canticle of Zechariah, which is also known as the Benedictus. "Blessed be the Lord, the God of Israel. He has come to his people and set them free. He has raised up for us a mighty Savior, born in the house of his servant David." And that's one of the aspects that makes this lauds or morning prayer special. Again, prime is the six o'clock hour then. And it's interesting because it's believed that prime was invented by the monks. John Cassian states, "so that they would not go back to sleep after lauds and before tirs." So again, lauds was at 5:00 in the morning, and tirs isn't till 9:00, and some of the lazier monks might have crept back into bed. So they invented prime at 6:00 AM as a way of keeping them up and active. And then again, tirs is the 9:00 AM hour. And this is significant. Why? Because it's the hour of Christ's condemnation to death. So it's believed that in the condemnation and the trial, which we witnessed Palm Sunday yesterday, and we'll witness in more detail this coming Friday, Good Friday, it's believed that occurred right around that hour of tirs, 9:00 AM in the morning. As I mentioned earlier, it's also believed that this was the hour that the Holy Spirit descended on the apostles of Mary in the upper room during Pentecost. In Acts 2:15, it says, "Seeing it is but the third hour of the day." And because of this, the feast days of the Roman calendar often hold Mass at 9:00 AM. Sext, meaning "six", six hours after 6:00 AM, is at noon. And it is believed that this is the hour that Abraham received the three angels, which are an image of the Trinity. It's also believed that this was the hour that Adam and Eve ate the fatal apple. So this noon hour has some challenge associated with it as well. This is when the divine light is at its fullest, and this is when the reception of the Gentiles into the church came about through the prayer of Peter on the rooftop that we looked at a little earlier. Now, the grandest of all significances, the noon hour, was the hour when Christ was nailed to the cross, once again, denoting the challenge and the tension that this noon hour presents. Now, known is the Latin word for "nine", nine hours after the first hour of six, which is approximately 3:00 PM. And this signifies the close of the day's business, and significantly, the death of Christ. This was also believed to be, of course, right after his death, the hour of his descent into hell. And it's also the hour that the apostles Peter and John in the Acts of the Apostles go to the temple and pray. It's believed to be the hour at which our first parents were driven out of the Garden of Eden. And it's when the sun, six, sinks on the horizon in the heat of the day. And likewise, man's spirit might sink with it. The Desert Fathers believed that this is when we are more open to temptation, the time that what's known as the noonday or midday devil or demon tries to bring us to take a nap. So there's a certain component of sloth, or what was known by the Desert Fathers as ascidia, which is kind of a spirit of distraction from what we ought to be doing, from what we're called to be doing at a given moment. If you're like me, I usually get very tired right around 3:00 in the afternoon, tempted to take a nap at that time. I also wanted to note that the hour again of 3:00, it's known, which is interesting, because we call noon here in our contemporary world, noon is considered to be 12. And it's believed that some of the monks, again, according to St. Benedict, didn't want to keep their fast until 3:00 PM. Also possibly the poor timekeeping and lack of technology back then, they began practicing their known 3:00 prayer earlier and earlier until it became associated with what we now call noon. And that leads to a little confusion. So many times when people first embark on praying the Divine Office, they see the word "known", they think that that's a noon prayer. But it's actually a 3:00 PM prayer that then later kind of got mutated due to various reasons. Now, vespers, as we said, is a major office that marks the close of the consecration of the day. And it involves burning incense and lighting candles. And like the morning prayer that involves the recitation of the Benedictus, this involves the magnificat of Mary, "My soul proclaims the greatness of the Lord; my spirit rejoices, and God, my Savior." And so you can pick up on that tone of thanksgiving from that alone. And the last hour of the day, complen, didn't exist before the time of St. Benedict. And it was believed to be coined by him as a compliment. So the word complen means complement or completion of the hours of the day. So this was the final closing of the day in recitation of prayers before turning in for bed. Now, these prayer hours stood all the way up until 1960, at Vatican II, and what was formerly known as the Benedictine Divine Office were readjusted to be called the Liturgy of the Hours. And they continue to mark the hours and sanctify the day with prayer. And they continue to be consisted of Psalms, supplemented by hymns, readings, and other prayers, and antiphons. Now, officially, together with the Mass, these prayers constitute the official public prayer life of the Church and form the basis of all Christian monasticism. That means all monks, in whatever kind of Christian order, whether that be Benedictine monks, Trappist monks, Dominicans or Friars, they would pray this. They would all pray this celebration of the Liturgy of the Hours daily, as well as all clerics, and that includes priests, transitional and permanent deacons, and all seminarians are not vowed to, although being that we're in training, we're expected to pray these Liturgy of the Hours daily as well. Likewise, the laity are also encouraged to recite this with others or individually. Just a few quick differences between what's transpired from Vatican II forward that's different from Benedict's version of the Divine Office. The Office of Readings is the big morning hour that was known as matins. So that was at 2:00 AM for Benedict. For us in our contemporary times, that can be prayed at any time of the day. So there's less of an obligation for priests who are busy to feel compelled to wake up at 2:00 in the morning and pray when they need to be resting for their parishioners. Morning prayer has now become one of the major hinges in its character as praise, like we talked about. And daytime prayer now, prime has been eliminated, or technically called suppressed. And the other three hours of tirs, sext, and known, only one of them needs to be prayed. So one or more can be prayed, but only one is required for clerics. And then again, evening prayer, vespers, is another major hinge. And that's that celebration time of giving thanks for the day, for what's been given, as well as what we've done well in the day. And then night prayer is again a minor hour. It's a shorter prayer. And it's really preparing the soul for its passage to eternal life. And if you look at the Psalms of complen, they kind of compare going to sleep as kind of dying to the day with the hope of rising to the morrow. Now, I'd like to talk a little bit about tenebré, because this corresponds directly with the ancient practice of Benedict's matins and lauds. Again, matins being his 2:00 AM Office of Prayer, and lauds being his 5:00 AM Office of Prayer. So tenebré is Latin for darkness or shadows. And this is a candlelight prayer service that dates back to the seventh or eighth century. And it's characterized by this successive extinguishing of candles. You can see here that the candelabra has 15 candles. There's one in the center, and that's considered the Christ candle. And you can see in each successive frame, more of the candles have been extinguished until only the one in the center remains lit. And so, as the service progresses, as each round of Psalm is concluded, another candle is extinguished. And this is quite striking, especially for our times. What this symbolizes is the extinction of all human hopes. And I just think it's very apropos for what we're going through right now, for kind of our failure to thrive based on our own ability alone. And we're really in a lantern desert, but in a real epical time of human history, when we're called to rely on God and God's providence for our help. And so our human hopes have come near extinction. And this ancient practice of tenebré memorializes this and characterizes this mood. So tenebré is patterned after the night and early morning Divine Office of Matins and Lauds. And when is it? It's basically the matins and lauds, the dusk and morning prayer for Thursday, Friday, and Saturday of the Easter trito. So that's Monday, Thursday, Good Friday, and Holy Saturday. Now, the interesting thing is that in the seventh and eighth centuries, in the great anticipation that came about, they began practicing and praying matins not at 2:00 AM, but not midnight, but 8:00 PM the preceding night. That means for Monday, Thursday, matins began at 8:00 PM on Spai Wednesday. And so this is the practice that we will conduct here at St. Brendan this coming Wednesday at 8:00 PM. We will be praying and chanting the Psalms. We'll have the words up on the screen for all of you to participate, to chant along with us. We'll have the camera, and we'll extinguish one candle with each round of Psalms that is concluded until only the Christ light, the middle candle, remains. Now, at that point, the Christ light will be temporarily hidden. And this, as the darkness has grown, is the anticipation of Jesus dying on the cross on Good Friday. The Christ light will then be hidden, and we will continue... The Christ light will then be hidden, and we will continue in silence. And there will be a loud crashing sound. And this is called, this loud crashing sound is called a strepitus. And this signifies the earthquake, as well as the closing of the tomb and the tumult in heaven that occurred at the death of Jesus. After a period of prolonged silence in the dark, the Christ candle, the single candle in the middle here, will then be returned to its place in anticipation of our Lord's resurrection at Easter. And the lights are restored to the degree that we can then silently leave while maintaining a spirit of solemn worship. So I sincerely hope that as many of you are able, now that you have a little background on what it is that's going to be happening in tenebrae, can join in with this understanding that we're entering into a liturgical prayer of the Church by doing so. I'd like to shift gears now into another key type of prayer that was promulgated by Saint Benedict. And that's his lectio divina. Saint Benedict, in between his prayer times, encouraged all of his monks to spend time in Scripture. And this involved a specific type of divine reading, a method of prayer, meditation, and communication with God that aims to slow down and spend time with God in order to fully absorb His Word. And through a careful balance of action and reception, praying and listening to God, Saint Benedict incorporated this into his rule of life, often between the very matins and lauds that will be praying at tenebrae or at other times of the day. And Saint Benedict was inspired by Scripture, which says, "The word is nigh in thy mouth and in thy heart." That is, the word of faith we preach. As well as, "The word of God is living and active, sharper than any two-edged sword, dividing the soul and spirit of both joints and marrow and quick to discern the thoughts and intents of the heart." Now, there are several stages involved in lectio divina. There's preparatio, lectio, meditatio, oratio, contemplatio, and oxio. And for those of you who were able to either sit in on the first session or watch the Dominican prayer session, you're familiar with these stages. And so we're gonna go straight to Scripture for today, and we're gonna apply these stages. So again, preparatio is this preparation. I told the story when we were here in person that I often used to, when I was a young boy, visit my grandmother. And she would, with me, we would prepare raviolis. And we would take the entire day to prepare the kitchen, to prepare the dough, to prepare the sauce. And I had the job usually of using the fork to press the edges of the raviolis. And then we would set the table. And only after we had cooked all the raviolis and then took a portion of them, set them aside to cool and eventually freeze, and then just enough for that day's meal and tomorrow's meal, we would set aside. And then we'd have a wonderful meal. And it was a very intentional process of preparation. We might think of entering into God's Word in a very intentional manner, a very sacred and special manner, like we're entering in to prepare a meal for guests or arriving at a guest, at a host's house for a meal. So again, this preparatio is receiving the state of mind and tranquility in order to enter into the Scripture. And we can invite the Holy Spirit to guide our reading of prayer. Now the second phase is called lectio. And this is when we read itself. And this is considered taking a bite, or receiving a bite, more appropriately, of Scripture itself. And this involves a slow, gradual reading of the scriptural passage, reading several times for a higher level of understanding, moving beyond our preconceived notions and ideas. And so what I'd like to do is begin with the first reading of the Gospel of John, Chapter 12. And I'll read it aloud the first time, and then I'll have you read it silently the second time. So this is a reading from the Holy Gospel according to John. Glory to you, O Lord. "Six days before the Passover, Jesus came to Bethany, where Lazarus was, whom Jesus had raised from the dead. They gave a dinner for him there, and Martha served, while Lazarus was one of those reclining at table with him. Mary took a liter of costly perfumed oil made from genuine aromatic nard and anointed the feet of Jesus and dried them with her hair. The house was filled with the fragrance of the oil. Then Judas the Ascarian, one of his disciples, and the one who would betray him, said, 'Why was this oil not sold for three hundred days' wages and given to the poor?' He said this not because he cared about the poor, but because he was a thief and held the money-bag and used to steal the contributions. So Jesus said, 'Leave her alone. Let her keep this for the day of my burial. You always have the poor with you, but you do not always have me.' The large crowd of the Jews found out that he was there and came, not only because of him, but also to see Lazarus, whom he had raised from the dead. And the chief priests plotted to kill Lazarus too, because many of the Jews were turning away and believing in Jesus because of him." Now, as we allow the words of Scripture to sift into our mind and illuminate our heart, we can ask, "What word or phrase captures your attention or grabs your heart?" And if this should happen, just linger on that word or phrase. So let's just take a moment to let that word or phrase settle into your mind and into your heart Now the second, or actually the third, preparatio, lectio is reading. Preparatio is preparation, lectio is reading. Meditatio is to meditate. And so this meditation is chewing on Scripture, so to speak. And this is a little different, whereas the lectio says, "What did the Scripture say in itself?" In meditatio, we're asking, "What does the Scripture say to us?" We can lightly and gently ponder on the Scripture passage from various angles, keeping our mind open and allowing the Holy Spirit to inspire meaning, filling the mind with thoughts related to scriptural passages. Now it's important to note that this is not, even though it's an active mental process, it's not a logical analysis that our Western mind is accustomed to, nor is it a complete kind of dissociation or an Eastern type of meditation. But it's an active engagement of the mind to heighten the intensity of our personal relationship with the Lord and to ask God, "What is He offering of us, offering us and asking of us? And what feelings are arising within us?" We ought to enter into this with an openness to be challenged and to further break down what God's Word is saying to us. And so I'd like for each of us to read this one more time. This time, we'll read it silently to ourselves. So we'll take a few minutes to read through it. As we move on from the meditatio, or reflection, meditation, phase, we can move into oratio, which is prayer or response itself. And this is basically savoring the essence of Scripture's flavor and import. Here can we, here we can ask the question, "What do I say to the Lord in response to His Word to me?" And this is a loving dialogue or conversation back and forth. Prayer is this exchange back and forth between us and God. And this is a response from our heart in which we speak to God with our feelings and insights. And this can come in many forms. It can be a formula where we can maybe recite a couple of Hail Marys or an Our Father, interjected within it for more insight. It can be adoration and praise stemming from our heart. We might be convicted of something in the reading that causes us to really feel sadness over sin or compunction for an offense that we've committed. It might involve thanksgiving. It might involve supplication or petition for a prayer request. So whatever that is, whatever that response to God is from your heart, it's how sweet those words are to our taste, sweeter than honey to our mouths. So let's just let the words of Scripture again sink in and see again if any particular word or phrase stands out. Now we're going to read it one more time. I'm gonna read it out loud before we enter the contemplatio, or resting, sitting back stage of lectio divina. "Six days before Passover, Jesus came to Bethany, where Lazarus was, whom Jesus had raised from the dead. They gave a dinner there for him, and Martha served, while Lazarus was one of those reclining at table with him. Mary took a liter of costly perfumed oil made from genuine aromatic nard and anointed the feet of Jesus and dried them with her hair. The house was filled with the fragrance of the oil. Then Judas the Ascarian, one of the disciples, and the one who would betray him, said, 'Why was this oil not sold for three hundred days' wages and given to the poor? He said this not because he cared about the poor, but because he was a thief and held the money-bag and used to steal the contributions. So Jesus said, 'Leave her alone. Let her keep this for the day of my burial. You always have the poor with you, but you do not always have me.' The large crowd of the Jews found out that he was there and came, not only because of him, but also to see Lazarus, whom he had raised from the dead. And the chief priests plotted to kill Lazarus too, because many of the Jews were turning away and believing in Jesus because of him." So we can now turn to this contemplatio stage where we sit back in a more passive mode to receive inspiration from the Holy Spirit, to hear more clearly what the Lord is saying and see this Scripture from the Lord's point of view. So here we're going to swallow, digest, and incorporate literally the Scripture into ourselves and ask ourselves, "What conversion of mind, heart, and life is the Lord asking?" This is a silent prayer that expresses love for God. The catechism defines contemplation as silence, the symbol of the world to come, or silent love. In this kind of prayer, words are like kindling that feeds the flame of love. And to contemplate is to take silent delight in the temple of the risen Christ. So here, we let God respond and speak to us so we can see reality from God's point of view. And as we sit quietly, we'll take another look at the Scripture passage and ask God, "What are you saying to me?" And this is where we rest in God's love and simply listen. And we'll take a few moments to do so. And then I'd like to encourage anyone out there to send in any words or phrases that jump out to you, any inspiration that you've received, any supplication that you might have, any sort of prayer response that you would like to share, that you feel is appropriate to share. And if you have any questions on this text, we can kind of have an interactive time of lectio divina and further uncover the meaning of this Scripture for us here and now, today, April 6, 2020, the first day of Holy Week as we prepare to enter into the Paschal Triduum. And so let's continue to just rest in this text. And in a few moments, if you'd like, please feel free to send in any comments on Facebook, and we can take a look at those, and I can respond appropriately. If you like, take another minute just to kind of peruse the Scripture and maybe take a look at a word or two that really had struck you. Just remain open to whatever the Spirit wants to say in terms of this Scripture reading, this word from the Lord. Okay, so as we move forward, we remember that really this passage comes on the heels of Passion Sunday and the preceding Sunday, the raising of Lazarus. And so this is the week of Passover of Jesus, his passing of this world to the Father. So today's gospel forms a link, if you will, between what's known as the Book of Signs, which is basically John, Chapter 1 through 11, and consists of seven miracles or signs. So John, Chapter 11 gradually unfolds and reveals Jesus turning water into wine, healing an official son, healing a man in the pool of Bethesda, feeding the five thousand, walking on water, healing the man born blind. And then lastly, a week ago before Palm Sunday, healing and raising Lazarus from the dead. So this Book of Signs in Chapters 1 through 11 is bridged by this current passage we've read into the Book of Glorification, which is in Chapters 13 through 21. So this Chapter 12 that we're reading today is a transition. It's a significant link and pivotal transition from the Book of Signs to the Book of Glory. Now, after the raising of Lazarus in Chapter 11, the high priest Caiphas said, "It is better for one man to die for the people than the whole nation to perish." And likewise, the chief priests at the end of Chapter 11. And the Pharisees gave orders that anyone who found out where Jesus was should report it so that he might be arrested. "Six days before his Passover, Jesus goes to Bethany." "What does Bethany mean?" you might ask. Bethany in Hebrew means house of affliction. And so despite this status that Jesus is And so despite this status that Jesus is wanted dead or alive, the family of Lazarus, Martha, and Mary is offering a celebration out of gratitude for raising Lazarus. Indeed, their love for Jesus is greater than their fear that being associated with Him will bring whatever affliction it might bring. Now, there are some interesting parallels here to Luke, Chapter 10. We recall in Luke, Chapter 10, that there's a scene in which Jesus dines with Martha and Mary, and Martha is doing all the cooking and Mary is sitting at Jesus' feet. Martha says, "Lord, tell her to do something. She's just sitting there and I'm doing all the work." Well, similarly, in this scene, Jesus is dining, Martha is serving, and Mary is sitting at the feet of the Lord. Yet, most interestingly, Lazarus is eating and drinking at table with Jesus. And through her silent contemplation and action, Mary is returning her love to Jesus, who first loves each and every one of us. And in a unique way, we could say that Mary is perhaps living out the last two stages of Lexio. Now, we kind of left off on contemplatio, but we'll turn now to the last stage, which is axio. And that's basically asking, "How do I want to give myself as a gift back to God and use the newfound energy that God's Word has given me in my life?" So out of love for God, we ask, "How do I want to give the gift of myself back to God and neighbor?" And again, if you have anything that's jumping out at you right now, any word or phrase from the Scripture, feel free to send that in. I'd love to comment with you on that. If not, we'll go ahead and continue with the exegesis of the Scripture, continuing to unfold what it might say.
We have three responses that have come in.
Okay. So we have "anointing of oil: Keep from my burial." And that was something that really resonated there. That's profound because Mary is maybe one of the first that has kind of gotten this message that Jesus has been trying to give to the disciples time after time, that the Son of Man must suffer, die, and rise again. Yet the disciples don't seem to want to have anything to do with this message. Yet, interestingly enough, Mary has now anointed the feet of Jesus and by wiping this oil with her hair, she's indeed joined the mission with Him. She's united with Him through this common anointing, both of His feet and now of her sacred hair, her head. And then we have "leave her alone. Don't let us be hesitant to express our love for the Lord." Amen. I should have asked if it's okay to say who it is that is writing these, but... So if you want, you could say, "Yes, it's okay," but if not, I won't say who it is. But I agree, "leave her alone. Don't let us be hesitant to express our love." So Jesus stands up for Mary here and corrects Judas in doing so. "The poor will always be with you, but you will not always have me. This causes me to think of the poor as our daily distraction, and we need to be more intentional about our relationship with Jesus." And so this was Dale again. Dale Garrett says, "Poor will always be with you, but you will not always have me. This causes me to think of the poor as our daily distractions, and we need to be more intentional about our relationship with Jesus." Now, I'll look at the next one. I wanted to comment on that because that's a... It's interesting because rarely does Jesus say anything that doesn't come somehow related to Scripture. And if we look in Deuteronomy, Chapter 15, 11, there's a talk about what to do every seventh year. And it talks about generously giving without a grudging heart, especially at the end of the seventh year. And in Deuteronomy 15, 11, it says, "You will always have the poor. Therefore I command you to be open-handed toward your fellow Israelites who are poor and needy in your land." And likewise, I think what's interesting in this passage is Jesus is saying, "Mary has given generously. Don't stop her from giving to me, the Lord." And I think you're right on, Dale, because Mary is focused on the Lord, whereas He's convicting Judas of having a grudging heart. And this can go back too to what we were talking about with alms giving. And we can see that Mary's example of prayerful compassion and Judas's example of pity for the poor, absence of prayer, is an interesting contrast where Mary is giving an example of prayer. She's contemplating silently with her heart. She's acting with her body, giving alms. And she's also not partaking in the meal. So in a way, you know, she's employing prayer, fasting, and alms giving all at one moment. I wanted to go back to some other comments here. "So will there be a criticism mass for blessing oils by our bishop?" Oh, boy, you threw me a curveball there. So the bishop certainly will do that. I don't know the details in terms of which eight people will be there for that, but I am almost sure that that will happen. But I will get the answer for you 100% from Father Wicker and respond to you directly for that. So I will get back to you on that one. That's a very good question. Thank you. A couple of other things that I thought were notable in this Scripture was that the sweet, again, the sweet fragrance of the anointing, this kind of sweetness of it, that although Mary, like one of our commenters said, is anointing the feet of Jesus, it's a sweet, it's a bittersweet anointing. And also, what's interesting is that she precedes an action that Jesus will perform on Monday, Thursday, with His disciples of washing their feet. Like what I think Dale said, or one of our other commenters, that Jesus defends Mary's intentions and then corrects Judas. But then the last thing that I thought was interesting is that we might all want to think about as well, is that Lazarus, due to his close association, Lazarus has been risen from the dead, like many of us have. Not literally, but Jesus calls us to die and rise in Him through our baptismal vows, to come to a new life in Him. So in a certain sense, we are risen with Christ through His baptism and through His resurrection. And so Lazarus, by association with Jesus, is dining with Him at table. He's eating and drinking, drinking from the chalice with Jesus. And I think that's significant because there was a time when Jesus was walking with His disciples and two of the disciples, James and John, wanted to know who was the greatest and their mom wanted to know if they could have the high seat in heaven with Jesus. And Jesus said, "Well, can you drink the chalice that I'm going to drink?" And so there's an allusion to Lazarus sucking at the table with Jesus. And as a result of that, now Lazarus' life is also being threatened by the authorities. We're coming near to a close here of our time together. And so what I'd like to do is just conclude with a brief prayer from St. Benedict for protection. And then before we do that, if there are any other questions that you have with regard to the development of the Divine Office, the Liturgy of the Hours, Tenebrae, or any of the Scripture that we've talked about. And what I'll probably do then is I will record the remainder of the St. Benedict section independently. And so we'll have the St. Benedict and St. Scholastica version posted on YouTube. Before we pray, I would like to remind us all that in this time of kind of health consciousness and the imminent virus, the threat of being infected that is all around us, that St. Benedict himself was a patron saint of those who have been poisoned. And he averted poisoning and had a way of ensuring protection through his presence that is invoked through what's known as the St. Benedict Medal. And so just to be assured that St. Benedict, when we're praying, is someone who can invoke protection for us. I just wanted to pull up the... St. Benedict is the patron saint of... I'll get it here. Those who have been poisoned, leaders, teachers...
I have a question.
Travelers, yes.
What publication of the Liturgy of the Hours would you recommend for laypeople?
So there are two publications. There's one that's simply called simply called Christian Prayer. And it's the simplest version. It's much thinner and it's really the best version to start with. The other version is a four-volume set for the different seasons. I would recommend starting with what's called simply Christian Prayer. And after coming to myself, I would be happy to teach you. In fact, I was praying quite often when we had daily Mass here with some parishioners afterwards, teaching them how to pray the morning prayer louds. And so Christian Prayer, it's only probably, I'm guessing, around $30 compared to the $100 for the four-volume set. So Christian Prayer is a good way to start and I'd be happy to show you how to use it because it's a wonderful way to enter into, like I said, the official public prayer of the church, really. It is considered liturgy. In fact, when praying that, even when I pray it, when Father Wicker prays it, when any monk prays it, it's intended as being praying for the intentions of the entire world. And so really, at this point in time, again, we all kind of feel helpless. This apostolate of prayer is one of the best and most powerful forces that we can employ to really help change the world and better those who we care about. Because I think that's one of the most striking things about this current dilemma that we're in is we all feel that we're kind of helpless. Yet we ought to be reminded that prayer is something the Lord gives us, not only for our own benefit, but for the benefit of the world. So with that, I'd like to conclude with a prayer with St. Benedict.
Again, there's one more question.
Okay.
Is there an app for that?
So the app actually, then, if you're going to use the app, then you have to use the... Let me pull it up here on my phone. It is the more complicated version, but it's actually so simple. It's called iBreviary. It's a lowercase i and then uppercase B-R-E-V-I-A-R-Y. iBreviary. And it's really very, very easy to follow. And so if you download that app and ask me, I'd be happy to kind of help you along with that. But after you've gone through it once, it's just so easy. So that's the most seamless app that I would recommend. Thank you for that. Very good prayer. Very good question. We're going to go with a double prayer here, much like Father would do at the conclusion of Mass. And so we're going to close in the name of the Father, Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen. "Loving God, Father, Son, and Holy Spirit, in the same manner that you inspired the life of St. Benedict to follow Christ, we ask that you open the floodgates of heaven and pour your grace upon us as we press forward on our journey through the desert of lantern life. May his ancient legacy of prayer continue to serve us here and now and guide us on our way, that we may see you, the Christ, more clearly, know you more nearly, and love you more dearly as we prepare to enter the promised land that awaits upon your Easter resurrection and beyond. Dear St. Benedict, we thank God for showering you with His grace to love Him above all else and to establish a monastic rule that has helped so many of His children to live full and holy lives. Through the cross of Jesus Christ, I ask you to please intercede that God might protect me, my loved ones, my home, property, possessions, and workplace today and always by your holy blessing, that we may never be separated from Jesus, Mary, and the company of all the blessed. Through your intercession, may we be delivered from temptation, spiritual oppression, physical ills and disease. Protect us from drug and alcohol abuse, viral infection, disease, impurity, immorality, objectionable companions, and negative attitudes. And we pray in the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit. Amen." And that brings us to a close of our experimental session, Praying with the Saints 1.5. Once again, for those of you that didn't get the full opportunity to be in the first session, I'll video-record the life of St. Benedict and his twin sister, St. Scholastica. Thank you so much for being with us. I hope you can continue to join us for the Masses of Holy Week for Tenebrae on Spy Wednesday, the night of Jesus, the night that Jesus betrayed, as well as for our Easter Triduum. May God bless us all, protect us from evil, and bring us to everlasting life. Amen. Thank you and good night.